Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome to the February 4th, 2025 Mount Vernon City School District School Board Meeting. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please note that trustee Donna Maribel is joining this evening's meeting via video conference from Marriott Marquis in Washington, DC, 901 Massachusetts Avenue, Washington, DC, 2001. Trustee McDonough.
Present.
Trustee Maribel.
Present, but I can't see the room.
Okay, we can try and fix that. Trustee Mitchell.
Present.
Trustee Middleton.
Present.
Trustee Engenga.
Here.
Trustee White.
Present.
Trustee Kerwin.
Here.
VP Kelly.
President Saunders.
Here.
We have our quorum and our student trustee De Grandpuy.
Here.
Hi.
Superintendent, do you want to do the recognition? Are we going to do that?
Good evening, everyone. I would like to start by recognizing two heroes within our district. Several board members wanted them to be honored, so we'll begin with that recognition. I'll go to the podium and anyone else that want to join me, please feel free. We had a medical emergency recently at the STEAM Academy. This emergency included a student who was unresponsive. We had two individuals that was very helpful to the survival of the youth who's still in a hospital, and, you know, we're praying for him. The first person we want to recognize is one of our security officers. His name is Joshua Melendez. Could you come forward? Thank you so much for saving a life. We appreciate your work, and it was so courageous of you to realize that the student was in danger and you helped him survive.
It was my pleasure.
Yes. Here's a certificate. Did you want to say?
No, just a little.
I'm just going to say that, first of all, not only is it a pleasure to have you in the building where my daughter attends, as we have already talked in the past, but to see the video and watch you jump on the scene the way you did and know exactly what to do, commend you and your counterparts. Our safety officers are extremely valuable and important, and you're appreciated. So thank you for what you did, saved, helped save that man's life.
Thank you. Thank you. Did you want to say anything?
It was just, it was something that it felt right to do, so I'm just, I'm happy. It was just, I don't know what to say, you know? It was like, I'm just glad you're here.
You did great job. Sorry to put you on the show. Thank you so much. The other individual was a registered nurse, a male registered nurse that I'm told can't be here tonight, Gary Air. Good to have medical people on the scene. We want to thank him as well. He couldn't be here, but let's give him a round of applause. Did you want to say anything?
One last thing. Just so that you understand, our safety agents in our buildings work extremely hard. They're not only keeping our babies safe, they're keeping our teachers, our building administrators, safe. And a lot of times, you know, some people say, "Yeah, I just came here yesterday. You know who I am. Well, I got to show ID." These are the reasons because of how, this is why them following what they're supposed to do, they're following protocol, and in certain situations like this, we had a gentleman that went above and beyond the call. So we have to be thankful for our blessings. He knew exactly what to do in a situation. A young man faces serious challenge, like I said, heart attack, something else, and he was on the scene. So we should always remember to respect and appreciate our safety officers in every one of our buildings, including this district office here. I appreciate you all. I'm sure we all do. I speak for all the trustees, I'm sure, as well as Dr. Smith, who doesn't need me to speak for her.
Again, thank you so very much. So tonight, I'm going to ask the board for consensus to change our meeting structure for tonight for presentation, because I want the community to hear, because a lot of times when we have public comment, a lot of people leave. So I want people to hear this presentation, if that's okay with the board members? Is that okay? Okay. All right, so tonight we have, tonight we have... Trustee Saunders. Excuse me? So most of the board said it was okay to switch up.
Let's, can we just take a vote? Is it okay to switch out?
Is it okay?
Two, three, four.
Okay.
All right.
So tonight, we have, I want to introduce Tamela Boyd, and she's going to talk about, she's going to talk about the Mount Vernon Charter Review Commission. So introducing Ms. Boyd here.
Okay. Dr. Smith, do you have something to say?
Oh, this one.
Okay. Hello. Sorry. Tamela, you have someone that's going to present with you as well?
Yes, but at the end of my comments.
Okay, all right.
So, good evening. As the board said, my name is Tamela Boyd, and I'm the chair of the 2024 Charter Review Commission. Thank you for giving me this time tonight to come and talk to you about the commission, what we've been doing, and how you all can get involved. I've now done several of these presentations, and at each one, people ask me about my background and how I got involved with the commission, so I'll share that here. I'm a relatively new resident of Mount Vernon. I purchased here in May 2023. I'm a lawyer, and I have been for just over 20 years. I've spent the bulk of my career in government, including nearly six years as a general counsel of a New York City agency, and I share that only to share that municipal governance isn't foreign to me. So when the charter commission formation was announced, one of my neighbors who knew my background talked me into applying, and so here we are today. With me tonight is Matt Leininger. He's a director with the National Civic League. The National Civic League is an organization with over 100 years of experience helping municipalities engage in good governance. They are advisors to the commission, and you'll hear from him a little later. So tonight, I want to talk to you, as I said, about the charter, what we've been doing, what you can do to help, and why you should care about any of this. And we had slides. If you're controlling the slides, could you go to slide two? Thank you. So what is a charter? So a charter, you can think of as the constitution for the city. It's the rulebook. So essentially, it mandates, it says how things are done in a city. It outlines the government, thank you. It outlines how the government works, who the officials are, and what powers they have, and it defines how laws are made, how services are delivered, and how residents can participate in the political process. A charter commission is a body appointed to review and suggest changes to the charter. In Mount Vernon, those recommendations are placed on the ballot for public vote. If voters approve the recommendations, they become the law. So a charter change can do a lot of important things. A charter change can alter the form of government, so the new form is better aligned with the preferences of its citizens. A charter change can restrict or increase options available to government leaders. A charter change can alter electoral representation. A charter change can clarify ambiguity or confusion caused by current language in the charter. Importantly, a charter change can redistribute powers among elected officials, appointed officials, and governing bodies, and it can also redistribute power as between city officials and residents. Finally, a charter change can convert elected positions into appointed positions and the other way around. So the Mount Vernon Charter Review Commission is a group of 15 people. Seven were chosen by the mayor, seven were chosen by council, and the 15th was chosen by the first 14. We also have an eight-member advisory board. Importantly, the advisory board doesn't vote, but they provide assistance to us and some much-needed expertise in areas that the commission members don't cover. So what has the commission been doing? We split into four subcommittees, each assigned to look at different parts of the charter. There was a finance committee, there was a governance/elections committee, a human resources/social services committee, and a public services-public works committee. The committees arranged interviews with relevant city officials. We interviewed the mayor, the comptroller, city council, and department heads. We also interviewed officials from other cities to understand their structure, operations, and issues, and this information was used to inform the decisions that the subcommittees were being asked to make. Based on what we heard, our experiences as residents, and our review of the charter, the subcommittees were asked to research possible solutions to issues and recommend charter amendments. Two subcommittees presented its recommendations, and a third is currently considering three additional recommendations, which they'll present at our meeting tomorrow. So as you can see from this slide, some of the initial recommendations that came out of the subcommittees were changing to a city manager or chief administrative officer form of government, which the subcommittee argued would provide professional city management and remove the politics from basic city services, eliminating the elected comptroller in favor of a non-political-appointed-experienced-finance professional, requiring a mandatory referendum, which is voter approval, of any tax increase above the 2% state tax cap, creating a formal process to ensure that the planning department has input into rezoning and land use decisions, and finally, having council members elected by wards rather than at large, which the subcommittee believes will make running for council more attainable and also result in better representation for all segments of the city. So these are just a few of the recommendations that the commission will vote on. The full list is available. If you want to see it, reach out to me, and I can get it to you, and we also intend to post the list on our website. So to recap, the commission has completed steps one and two on this slide. We are now at step three, which is educating the public about the process and the topics under consideration. Now, I've been doing my best to get out in front of as many groups like this as possible to talk about the charter, its importance, and how folks can make their voices heard, to help with that outreach process. As I said, we're working with the NCL, and they've helped us draft an opening survey. That survey is designed to get some baseline information about how Mount Vernon residents feel about their government and how the government's been doing. At the end of this, Matt's going to show you the results that we have so far, so you can see the kind of information they're collecting and the numbers that they're going to crunch, and at the end of that process, we will share the outcome of the survey once the survey closes. After that, the commission will consider the survey results and any feedback we've gotten from the public, and then, very, very importantly, on March 19th, the voting members of the commission will vote on which initiatives to send to the ballot for Mount Vernon residents to vote on. I think that it is vitally important that we hear from as many people in the public as possible to make sure that when commission members vote, we're voting with your voices in mind. That's part of the reason that I'm here. After that vote, the commission will hold public hearings and community conversations to inform the public about the initiatives that survived the vote, and after that public engagement process, we'll finalize the proposals, we'll draft our report telling the public how we got to where we were, and then we'll submit the proposals for inclusion on the ballot in November 2025. How can the school board help? The school board can provide your insight into how the city's governance impacts schools. You can provide recommendations on charter changes that you might like to see. You can encourage your members and parents and anyone in your sphere of, in your sphere of impact to get involved. You can provide space for upcoming public hearings or community conversations. You can also take the surveys, attend the public hearings, organize community discussions, and tell anyone who will listen about this process and the importance of this process, what it can mean to them. And if you know of any groups that want to have this conversation, let me know, and I will happily go to them. Most important, in November, please vote. And just in closing, I just want to talk a little bit about why you should care about any of this. I know that the school district and the city are different legal entities here, but our fates are hopelessly intertwined, right? How the city is run and the financial state of the city has a direct impact on the financial state of the school district, and you're living through that right now. You will continue to experience that as decisions are made about things like pilots, for example, that maybe do not take into account the impact on the school district. Also, you're not just school board members and parents, you are residents. And as I said earlier, as the residents, you are the ultimate deciders. The commission makes recommendations, but you all vote, and if you don't want it, it doesn't happen. So, you know, I think the charter is great. While the charter is far from a magic pill, it is a very good place to start to address the issues that currently plague Mount Vernon. And so now I'm going to turn it over to Matt, and he's going to show you, tell you a little bit more about the NCL and show you the results of the survey so far. Thank you guys again for hearing me out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tamela. Thank you so much, all of you, for letting us be part of your meeting tonight. I'm Matt Leininger. I run the Center for Democracy Innovation at the National Civic League. The Civic League is itself kind of a historic organization. It was founded in 1894 by Teddy Roosevelt, Louis Brandeis, Mary Monford, a number of other people at the time, and it was founded in order to make democracy work better. The democracy at the time was going through a rough patch. Trust in government was low, polarization was high, democracy wasn't working as it should, and so the Civic League was part of a wave of reforms from the 1890s to the 1920s that helped to kind of establish the forms of government that we use today. So clearly, we have some trouble now with democracy at every level. School systems and local governments are on the front lines of that, and we're trying to kind of help again, to help kind of modernize, you take some of those structures that have been around for about 100 years, and to kind of bring them into the next century and make sure that they're working the ways that we all want them to work. One of those levers for change that's actually, was part of that original kind of wave of reforms, is the city charter. And the league has actually been the holder of the model city charter since 1902. We update it every so often, and the ninth edition, which came out in 2021, was the first to embrace equity and engagement as core principles, core priorities of local government. So it's actually an interesting sort of thing, because, and most people don't know that the city charter exists even, and even people who work in city government or are local officials don't really pay it much attention, but it's essentially the constitution for your city. It is basically the kind of agreement between the institution and the people of that community about how they want to govern together, how they want to interact, how they want to exchange information, all those sorts of good things. So you can kind of put all kinds of interesting and helpful things into your city charter to kind of change the way the governance works. So as part of the process, one thing we'd like to do is have a kind of really easy mobile survey that we use that we call a scorecard to get people's input on things. And so I'm going to show you a little bit of the version of this we've done for Mount Vernon that Tamela and her colleagues have been kind of using in different parts of the city over the last few weeks. There's a link that was in the email, and if you click on that, you should be seeing the results, and if that isn't working, I can always share my screen. And I can't actually see you all in the room, so you'll have to bear with me. Tamela, is it showing up on the screen for them?
No. No.
No, it isn't.
No, it's not.
Okay. Let me try sharing my screen. All right. So, so far, we've had 135 people take this survey, and we're going to let you all, I'm going to show the QR code in just a minute, so that you all can take it as well. But so we have 135 people, about two-thirds were able to make it through the whole survey, which is actually a fairly good rate for surveys. And we asked a number of different things, some general and some more specific things about the charter. So we asked a general thing here, and the first question, which is, you know, how, in what areas do you feel local government is performing well? Waste management, among the things, the options we gave, waste management was the top vote getter. None of the above actually was the single top thing, but that's obviously not a specific category. Would you like to be more likely to engage in local government if there were more opportunities for community input? We asked that, and most of the people either said yes, or they said yes and, more of these opportunities should be established in the charter. So there's a fair amount of, kind of, at least so far, of kind of motivation for change in the charter that would make it easier for people to engage in local decision-making. We asked what barriers, by the way, you are seeing my screen, right? I'm not hearing anything, so I'm hoping you are, that you can hear me.
Okay. Yes, we can hear you, Matt.
Okay, got it. Okay, so now the third question here I'm showing, hopefully you can see this, what barriers do you face, if any, in participating in local government? Most people, the top kind of vote-getters so far has been that meetings have not been advertised early enough. After that, there's a lack of information about how, and then some people said meetings don't work, don't happen at times that work for me. Very few people actually said they don't have time to participate, which is interesting, because that's a common perception. We also asked, in what areas do you feel local government could improve? And the number-one thing here was transparency, decision-making, followed by engaging residents earlier on decision-making processes, and then making it easier for residents to engage. I'm not, there is, we also gave people the chance to write in some options here. I'm not going to click on that now for purposes of time, but you'll be able to see all these results, including the write-ins, through the link. And then we asked some very specific questions about how you might want to be engaged in decision-making in the city. So we asked a wide range of things. One, do people want more input on budget decisions through processes like participatory budgeting, which is something that is a New York City, in many New York City boards now, and citywide. Do you want regular surveys from local government on key issues? Regular events where you can talk with your council member and city staff? Better council meetings with more dialogue? That's a common one in some communities where they've got kind of an old-fashioned format for dialogue, where basically people just get two minutes of the microphone to make their comments. More control over zoning and other issues at the neighborhood level, and an annual process where a random sample of city residents learn about a big issue and make recommendations to council, and that's a term for this, a citizens' assembly. So the approval rates for each of these things are fairly high, all of them over 50. The highest single thing looks like the regular events where you can talk to your council member and city staff, which is a basic and commendable thing. And then, what measures would you like to see the charter to, see in the charter to ensure accountability for governing bodies? So people, we asked people about regular public reporting on decisions and outcomes, independent audits of performance, clear consequences for unethical behavior and misconduct, mechanisms for residents to appeal decisions, and transparent decision-making processes. Again, the response, the approval rates of these things are generally high overall. The mechanisms for appeal is the least popular, but it's still over 58%, and independent audits and clear consequences for unethical behavior are the two top vote-getters. Then at the bottom, as you'll see, we also asked people some basic demographic questions, you know, which zip code do you live in, in Mount Vernon? And then we asked people just to give some description of themselves, and that basically the way that the thing works is you can say as much or as little as you want about your political views, whether you're male or female, you know, your racial, ethnic background, your age group, all those sorts of things. We're running a bit high, proportionally high, in 50, 60, 70-year-olds, so we're higher on the older end of the scale. That's, you know, a fairly common thing. But in terms of getting more equitable participation in the survey, getting the 20-plus, if you are people under the age of 40, I think would be a big kind of priority moving forward. So those are the, those are the results so far, and in a second, we'll, I'll put up the QR code, or you can put it up in the room, depending on what's working here. Anyone have questions or comments based on what you've seen so far?
I have a question.
Sure.
So this was done online, correct? Tamela?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm like, where's the question coming from? Yes, the survey is online. It was also blasted out by email. I sent it to a bunch of different community groups. It is posted, the city posted it online, and my expectation is that the city is going to blast it out to email groups, to email groups this week. So what he's showing now is the form. This form was actually created by the city, and this is what's posted online, and that's the QR code. If you point your cameras at it, it should give you the little yellow address for the survey, and you can go there and take it.
So you, I think he mentioned that a lot of seniors have, but there are some seniors that don't have, or don't have access to internet or websites that are not, maybe not know about this. Would it be okay if they mail out the surveys? Would that be a possibility?
I can certainly ask. I mean, obviously, it's not something that we can do in the charter commission, but it certainly would not hurt to ask the city if they can do that.
And then, when does the survey end?
I have not put a close date on it, because I want to talk to the NCL about the, sort of, the right number of responses to make, actually crunching the numbers mean something. We have gotten a pretty good opening response, but I wouldn't expect it within until closer to the time that we have to vote. And I just want to give them a chance to, you know, crunch some numbers and give us some information about what the results of the survey show. So in my mind, that is maybe a week before March 19th, at least then.
Okay.
And I think the plan is, Tamela, correct me if I'm wrong, to have some face-to-face meetings, right, where you could be showing some of these results, allowing more people to take part in the survey if they haven't already, allow people who don't have access to the internet maybe to come to the meeting and learn more and share some of their views. So I think there'll be a range of ways for people to participate.
Yes. I don't know if you heard what Matt said, but the plan is, so like I said, I've been going out to these groups. We just got this form, but I will be having these with me. Again, I will ask about being able to mail them out, but I might be able to take some hard copies with me and hand them out as well. But I am planning to do several more of these before voting, which is why I ask, if you know of any group that, you know, I can go to and talk about this and maybe take some of the forms, I would be happy to do that.
Okay. Any questions by board members? Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and you have my information. If you have any questions, you think of anything, please reach out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Matt. Thanks, Matt.
Okay. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
All right, so we could go on to public comment.
We're going to move on to public comment. There is no legal requirement to recognize public comment at meetings of the Board of Education. However, the board recognizes the critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children, and accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak at each regularly scheduled board meeting, subject to the terms of the board policy. Please state your name and the organization, if any, you represent. A speaker must register in advance by no later than 4:00 PM the day of the meeting by contacting the district clerk in person at 160 by contacting the district clerk in person at 165 North Columbus Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York, by phone at 914-665-5235, or by email. The Board welcomes all respectful comments, whether praise or criticism. However, identifying and criticizing a specific student, parent, teacher, administrator, other Mount Vernon education official or employee is strictly prohibited. Any such complaint must be presented and addressed through the proper administrative channels. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak. Up to one additional minute may be used for the speaker to summarize and conclude their remarks. If appropriate, board trustees and/or the superintendent or other staff members at the direction of the superintendent may immediately respond to a speaker's remarks. Our first speaker tonight is Stephanie Brown. Stephanie Brown?
Okay.
Hola, buenas tardes a todos. Tengo una pregunta, porque estas preguntas no están transmitidas en español? Mayoría de la comunidad es hispana. Segundo, por qué todavía no me contestaron mi pregunta, porque las estudiantes tienen que sufrir las consecuencias de ustedes?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
And young lady stated that why these meetings are not broadcasting in Spanish, because the, a majority of the people in the city speak that language, and that's what she's requesting. She also asked if, uh, the question that she submitted was not answered yet.
Could you actually provide with the question? Maybe I can repeat it to them?
She's gonna state it right now, hold on.
Porque las estudiantes tienen que sufrir las consecuencias de ustedes?
Okay. Why the students have to suffer the consequences of the decisions made by the board?
Okay.
That was the question. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Sure.
Student.
Ms. Aguilar?
You need to translate.
Uh, I'm gonna, you speak English as well, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak in English, I don't speak Spanish.
Well, yes, I do speak English. But majority of the community and most of the people that probably are online don't speak English, and there's no one to translate for them.
Yeah, no, I understand, that's a good point. I understand that point. I appreciate that point, and I'm sure we'll, we'll take efforts. You were the young lady who was at the meeting in December, is that right?
Yeah.
Who, and the question was, why, why are you having to suffer consequences?
Yeah, why do I have to suffer?
For our actions.
Yeah.
So first, let me just say, I apologize for, that you didn't get an appropriate answer back then. I wish I had said something back in December, I didn't say anything, so I, I'm sorry that I, that I didn't say anything. I will say something now to that, I will address that now. Um, I know it's hard to go through a change like this, but our intention is not to do it to you personally, okay? It's not, I know it is personal, and I know it feels that way, personal, and it should, because it is, it affects you, but that's not our design. Our design is not to rain particular consequences on you. Our, our design is to improve the overall, uh, profile of the school district going forward, right? So we look, we look over, it's more of a utilitarian approach, we're looking over the whole, the whole thing. I would say to you, your resolve going through this, appearing once, twice, now a third time, that suggests to me that you have a lot of resilience, and that you're gonna do quite well in this transition, and I would ask you to help shepherd some of your classmates who might be struggling, uh, through this process as well. Look, look out for them if they're struggling, because you seem to have the resolve to do it. And again, apologize for not responding in December, and best of luck to you. Buenos noches.
Thank you very much.
I have something also. Ms. Aguilar, we spoke the night of, I apologize to you then. Have you had any apology publicly from this board?
No.
No one? So you've gotten no apologies from anyone?
No.
As of a public, so I'm, I'm, I'm going to piggyback off of my fellow trustee, and I'm going to personally offer you a public apology for how you were treated at that town hall meeting. You deserve to have your question answered, and while all of us were not mediating, moderating, and only one of us here is the acting superintendent, somebody should have answered your question, or at least said, "We can get back to you, talk to you on the side," the way at least one of us did at the end of the meeting. So again, I apologize, and we need your voice, and voices like yours, your teammates, classmates, they should come, bring them with you. Let them come here and speak their message also in their native language, and speak in English as well, but come share and show up. That's the most important part, please continue to do this, do not let anything discourage you from that.
Thank you, I will.
Ms. Aguilar. Aguilara, I did speak to you after the meeting, but I was moderating, and a town hall was presented by the school district, which the superintendent is in charge of, and the answers you needed should have come from her cabinet and the superintendent.
So why couldn't I have?
I talked to you after the meeting, so it wasn't just one-
You didn't talk to me, you talked to my mom.
I did, I talked, okay, well, you were standing there. I addressed both you and your mother and the people around you. So you did get an answer.
Not an answer.
And I appreciate you, I appreciate you coming out, but it's incorrect that no one spoke to you after the meeting.
Because it's true, no one did.
So you weren't standing there, I didn't come up to you and say, and address you?
You didn't come up to me, you came up to my mom.
Mother, you, there was a group of people there.
My family, but you didn't come up to me, you came up to my mom.
Well, good luck in your future.
Madam Chair, I'd like to address the young lady as well.
Thank you. Sandra Booker?
Ma, Madam Chair, I'd like to address the young lady as well, can you hear me?
I think we went on to the next one.
We have a trustee that's also speaking to Ms. Aguilar.
I guess there's a delay in me hearing you or responding, so I would like to address the young lady, if I may.
Ms. Booker, just one moment.
All right, go ahead, trustee Maribel.
Uh, I too would like to apologize to you, Ms. Aguilar, and I would also like to say to you that although none of us wants to see what is happening happen, it is an unfortunate situation. We do apologize if you felt as though your voice was unheard. I hope that you feel as though that your voice was heard tonight, um, since there were three other trustee members that did address you. If you have any further questions, please, I would like to encourage you to continue to reach out. If you have questions, you or your mom or your family to come out and, uh, speak to us, and if we could speak to you after the meeting, um, of course, we would like to do that as well. So we, we do have email addresses that are available, if you'd like to email us, you can also do that, and we will, um, try to respond to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll say, since we are doing this tonight, I wanna say to you, Aguilar, listen, be the voice that others do need, young people, and be persistent, as you have been, to continue to come back where you are right now. Demand your answers, because you got a right. So keep on keeping on, and be the voice, be the voice.
I will, don't worry.
Okay, Sandra Booker?
My name is Sandra Booker, I am-
Can you speak a little in, in the mic? Thank you.
My name is Sandra Booker, I am a parent here in the Mount Vernon City School District, I have two children in the district. Touching on what the young lady, um, addressed, one of the easiest ways to connect with your community is a welcome. Taking the time to speak to your community, being welcoming, welcoming criticism, as you say, when you address your public comment, that's not what the community feels here. They do not feel welcomed, they do not feel that their words are welcome, because when they do express what they are feeling, what they are going through, the snickering, the comments behind the microphone, like, we can hear you, whether it's online, whether it's in person, we hear you, and we hear that you don't welcome us, you don't welcome the community, you don't welcome the comments. Keeping a district office open when you operated completely fine out of Mount Vernon High School, while closing three schools, is completely laughable. Why are we maintaining this building for admin when you have an underutilized campus that you can obviously operate out of, because you did it for months while you were renovating this building? The reason why you're losing your students is because you have yet to address the real issue in Mount Vernon City School District, and that's the, the lack of a substantial curriculum for these students, making sure that they are learning the things that they need to learn, so that they can be successful in life, making sure that they are served Having a search and a forum for a new superintendent in a school that you're closing is the biggest slap in the face to the community. I took my two children out of their previous school because our acting superintendent didn't do her job in her previous position to protect my children. And now, after them being in this flourishing environment, under a wonderful principal, under a wonderful set of teachers and admin, I'm now being told that their school is being closed, and that my daughter, who has options for charter, because that's where our students went, our students were chased to the charter by this trustee board, by admins that go unchecked for years, and get to stay in their positions without being properly reprimanded, even though they are doing tons of damage to our community. We come to you and ask you, for simple, when's the last time you stepped into your schools? When's the last time you walked through your schools? When's the last time when it wasn't you being voted into your next seat in office? Did you speak to your community and find out what is really happening in the schools? When did you take the time to speak to your parents to find out what's really happening, how the students are being served in each one of their schools? I come from Brooklyn, we have a very, very highly maintained PTA community, and our PTA has a forum on the board, they are able to speak out. Our PTA should be able to speak without interrupting public forum to present the good that they're doing in the community. Please give them a platform.
Thank you, Ms. Booker. Thank you. Cynthia Crenshaw?
Thank you. Um, my name is Cynthia Crenshaw, and I am going to be repeating the same statements over and over again, trying to save our legacy, just like the Columbus citizens tried to save Columbus Day and remove Indignuous Day from the school calendar. Cecil H. Parker was the first black principal, I'm sorry, the first black teacher in Mount Vernon, and Dr. Clinton Young, Sr., was the first black principal. Although you mentioned Edward Williams' name was mentioned, but he stood on the shoulders of Ms. Parker. Parker School has had such renovations as new bathrooms, new lighting, the foyer was painted, the locker was painted, they re, they redid the resource room with new floor, walls, and completed painting. We had a basketball court donated by Good Morning America, new pre-k playground, fairly new cafeteria, and handicap accessible for front and back. This board, I understand, is trying to sell the schools for the dollars for these properties, whatever how much that would bring, I hear 34.5 million, I'm not sure, I don't know what it is. Okay? So you're trying to sell our schools. If this is unjustified to sell the schools, and the community finds out that some of these board members are into real estate and will be profited from the sale of our schools, they should be seriously jailed, seriously jailed. I understand the charter school is trying to increase their enrollment, we went through this again, I brought petitions to you and gave you petitions, I've asked you several times whatever happened to those petitions, and do you have the date when they're supposed to be coming to the board to talk about increasing their enrollment? Also, there's some negative, um, things going around about this survey that you guys are doing for a superintendent. I understand that this per, that these, that this group in Maryland, that they did not do what the board wanted them to do, that this survey that we're gonna be talking about tomorrow, that this group hired the same associate superintendent, and that we are paying them $52,000. Now, if you're trying to throw us off by putting all these negative things out there about this group that is going to do this survey, it's not going to work. We need a survey, we need a positive one, we need a justified superintendent. That's all I have to say, and we are not gonna just sit on our hands and let you do whatever you want to do. There will be rallies, there will be petitions, whatever it takes, we need a justified board. This board is not right, you're getting rid of three schools, from the last meeting, all of the trustees was not on board together, we had a five-to-four vote, why was these three schools picked? It's, it was picked because of the property that you are trying to sell. We are not going to just sit on our hands, we're gonna fight you all the way. If you make it, so be it, but we're gonna let you know we're gonna fight you, and what you're doing is not right to our kids or the citizens of Mount Vernon, it's not right. And if you sell these schools and we find out that anybody up there is into real estate, I hope you are jailed.
Thank you, Ms. Crenshaw. Lynn Middleton?
Good evening, Mount Vernon community, I am Bishop Dr. Lynn, M. Middleton School Board trustee. I'm concerned about Mount Vernon City School District's future. I'm concerned that some decisions that have been made are made, and are still made, and are made by those at the helm without full board awareness or consent most of the times. As elected representatives, it is crucial and critical that all of us are always informed and involved in the major decisions that affect our school community, where priority number one is a concern, which is our children. And when actions are taken without our collective knowledge and approval, it undermines the full board's authority, and can lead to outcomes that may not align with our supposedly shared vision and values. I pray, I pray for those who sit at the helm of where I sit, prioritize transparency, which has been questionable for a long time, as I have had the seat that I sit in, and collaboration should not be just some of us elected representatives, but all of us as a full board, F-U-L-L. This is Black History Month, and if I had to define it by where I'm sitting, my biggest question would be, why are, why are we celebrating what we do without knowing what the real effects of it is? So where is the effect of it, talking loud, saying nothing? We should all be here to serve the best interests of our students, families, and school communities, but my colleagues, it requires open communication and a cooperative decision-making process. I pray that in the days ahead, it will be those of us who will work together, that will help to restore trust, because I'm gonna tell you, I lost it, where I sit and ensure that the full board is fully engaged in charting the district's path forward. We must focus on the process and principles, rather than attacking individuals. Be mindful that everybody gonna get a turn, me today, you today. There is an urgent need for transparency, and an urgent need for collaboration, and a need for board's rightful role in decision-making. We have to address concerns without escalating tensions by calling right, wrong, and wrong, right? Amen. Amen, I'm gonna say, it is so. And so, it can't be do as I say do, it can't be I'm going along just to get along. What was the purpose of you running for where you're sitting to in a seat right now? So all of this really is a springboard to negativism. It speaks volumes when, as a trustee who will not be controlled- It speaks volumes when, as a trustee who will not be controlled, call a department in this building for all the right reasons, and I'm told, oh, she said I can't talk to you. It speaks volumes when I walk in an office in this building and I might not finish, it's okay, because I can come back. And again, I'm told she can't talk to you. It speaks volumes when employees invite some of us to come as trustees to food service meetings and the like, and I'm told, and we're told, oh, y'all can't come to the meeting. It speaks volumes. So as a result, again, it speaks volumes about how some staff is being treated even in our district. All this is a springboard to negativism. Employees versus their concerns about how they're afraid to speak about what's wrong, that in some instances they are being treated inappropriately by some principals, some, just some, oftentimes without accountability, because temporarily they're protected by what's wrong. And protect who they know is wrong. So on December nineteenth, I could not get into a Zoom meeting for school closures because the host principal said that orders from her boss said not to let us in. My God. Am I done?
Yes, you're done.
All right. Because I know you're gonna tell me to sit down when you thank others.
And that ends public comments. Ms. Smith?
Okay. So, Dr. Smith, if you want to...
Do you want to do superintendent's report?
Yes.
You have a superintendent's report?
Oh, I didn't know that. I was just taking all your time. I was gonna have a HYA speaker. Did you want to do?
I'm gonna speak first.
It's up to you.
Go ahead.
You're short.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Just another curve from our regular, we're gonna have, HYA is the search firm that we're, the board has used, has selected to do the search for the new superintendent. And they're here, and I think Mr. McCormick and Karen are here to present. Ed McCormick from HYA and Karen Lakin?
Gielan.
Gielan.
It's a pleasure to be here. And first, let me say thank you for the opportunity to help shape the future of the district. Certainly, finding the next superintendent is the most important task that boards come upon. So I, this is my seventh year with HYA. Last five years, I've done about thirty searches, and they're all different, but they're all important, and we managed to find the best person for the district in all the ones that I've been in. We've had a high degree of success, a little bit about HYA. National organization with a national reach but a local touch. We have about a hundred and thirty associates across the country. We have done about sixteen hundred superintendent searches over the last thirty years. So we have a research-tested, basic processes and protocols that we are extremely proud of and has led to a great deal of success. There is a, what we'll do this evening very quickly is that Karen will take you through the three phases that we will focus on. This is all for information, and then I'll just end up updating you where we are in the protocol as it relates to the timeline. We were driving towards a June, July first start date, but a, but really, a preferred candidate should be in place by April fifteenth, because chances are, we will not bring someone to you who's out of work, and they have an exit language in their contracts. So we allow about two months for them to exercise that language and be available on the start date that you're seeking. So the work starts, has already started, and we will complete everything about April fifteenth, as I mentioned. At this time, I'd like, I'd like Karen to take you through those stages, and then I'll complete the summary at the end.
Thank you, Ed. Just a little bit more about our firm, too. We are the faces that you'll see in the district. However, we do have that full-time back office and IT staff that support what we do, so it's more than just the two of us that are working on this search for you. And this is the way that we approach it. We do have these, these are steps through it. Right now, we're in the engaging part. It's about three to four weeks where it is very important to understand the desires of the organization. Now, notice, that's not just one person, that's the organization. We are, while we're here, and what we're hoping for tonight is to make sure that many people will go to the survey. We've heard about surveys tonight. This is another survey that's very important to get your input. We want the input from everybody in all constituencies. That helps us understand the desires of the organization, because the organization is the entire school community. We're meeting with focus groups who are representatives of some of the constituencies, but we're even telling those who are coming to the focus groups to also, on their own individually, go and fill out that survey. It's a brief survey, it's in both English and in Spanish, that we're looking for the feedback which will help us determine what are the skills, the knowledge, the dispositions, those attributes of a successful superintendent in the Mount Vernon City School District. Very often, leadership is contextual, and the needs here are not the same as the needs in the school district next door or the next county over or on the other side of the state. The needs here are specific to things that are happening here. So what we're doing as your search consultants, listening to you, taking all of that input, and then we will come up with a leadership profile. That'll be the next time that you see us, except for tomorrow night, and hold that thought, because I want to come back to tomorrow night. But that next time that you'll see us formally is presenting the leadership profile, which is taking all of the data from everyone who has put into the survey and all of the focus groups and from the community forum. We'll take that information, put it into a profile, and we'll also use that then to sort through the candidates who are interested in the position. Because there should be a direct match from what you're looking for to what candidates we're bringing to you. And that's into that next phase of recruiting. We're bringing in the widest range of candidates who meet the requirements. Not who, just a bunch of candidates. These are people who meet the requirements, and it's the requirements that are specific to Mount Vernon. Then after that, we're facilitating that selection process as the Board of Education. Does their good work in going through those candidates, doing their interviews, first round, doing finalist interviews, and then we'll be sending off to a third party to do a very deep background search on a successful candidate. Then, as Mr. McCormick was saying, it goes into the next phase of bringing that, the transition of the new leader. And we'd like to have that done by July first, that is our target date. So speaking of those dates, oh, this is just one more way of showing how all of this information, the board's strategic plan, the board interviews, interviews with each individual board member, the focus groups, the community forums, and the stakeholder survey, all feeds into that professional profile report. I guess instead of just talking, I should have changed that so you could see it while I was talking. All right, now, this is our timeline. We had a planning meeting with the board on January twenty-third. The focus groups are happening this week, and tomorrow evening, we are, and it is in this room, correct? We're having it right here?
No, you're having it at the next school, over next door, at homeschool.
So next door, I won't be here, I will be next door, and we're inviting everyone from the community to come to that community forum and provide that input. And we'll be asking three very simple questions and taking all of that information back again. So we do invite you to come, and if you can't, please make sure that you fill out the survey. The survey runs until February seventh. That profile report will be on February thirteenth. Then we'll start going through those candidates, present the slate to the board on March twenty-fourth, with the initial interviews being on March twenty-ninth, the finalists the next week on April fifth. And that takes us to the date that you heard Mr. McCormick saying, that we want to go back to the background checks, and the target date for the public announcement would be April fifteenth. Mr. McCormick?
Just a couple nuances as it relates to the search itself. Everything that you do is anonymous. The focus groups, we will not report anything by name. We will report by group. For instance, I will, in the process now of interviewing the board members, they, all of their comments will be aggregated into one section. Teachers, principals, all of the people that we talk to, we will report all of the information by that organization or by that group, but there will be no names, and we don't even take names during the session. That's, so people should feel free to share their true interests and their real feelings with us. There is a, in an attempt to have a, whether it's the focus group or the surveys, confidentiality is important. That is a, will be, will be the hallmark of all of the, all of the items that report back to you. All of the reports that we make will be to the board in a public forum. We will not have two separate type reporting, one for the board, one, it will all be to the board. So whatever we tell the board, the public will and hear the same thing. Now, if there is a specific, something personal on an individual, we may not do that in a public forum if it's protected. But the information, generally speaking, everything, the LPR, the leadership profile report, the desired characteristics report, will come back to the board. The slated candidates that we bring to the board for the initial review will be eight to ten candidates. We will not publicize that. We will, and everyone has agreed that this is a confidential search, and the reason for that is simply that there are people who would love to come to the district, but they're in a very comfortable position as they are. And to have their names bannered about before even consideration by the board is unfair to them, to their home districts, and certainly to your district. So when we get down to personnel pieces and applications, those pieces will be done confidentially until the board is ready to announce their preferred candidate, which is around April fifteenth. There is a, so, there is, there will be a time, on the webpage, the timeline will be there, so you can check us against our progress. There is a, all the information that we provide to the public will be linked into that timeline, into that superintendent's search section of the website. We will not, we will come back and provide updates to the board, both in person and by email, depending on how the schedule is running. And that information will be available again to, in the timeline. So the progress reports that we are making will be available to the public as well as the board. We have a, there is no, there is no intention to change the information that we receive. We make no judgments about it. We report it as we see it. Now, as we hear it, there is a, so if you have thin skin, maybe you don't want to listen to the report, or read the report, but the, we will not alter the information as reported. Now, we will not report obscene statements and things that are off the charts, but we will, the information we report will be as we heard it. And that would be for your review. There is no, there is no intention to hide anything as we come forward in this process. It's too important to play Mickey Mouse games with the data and not find the best employee, best superintendent for the district. So there is a, there, we will, the backend, let me make one comment. Karen mentioned it, was a deep background check. As we find the preferred candidate, we will do a deep, deep background check on that candidate at the, at the will of the board. There is a, we would do, go back seven years on news and social media, criminal background checks, bankruptcies, financial background, there are no more about, we probably know more about them than they know about themselves. There will be a, there will be a mortgage payments. We see all of those things that relates to payment of credit cards, and we don't miss much. It's done by a third party. It doesn't, it does not benefit us at all as an organization, and they bring the report back. I will receive the report. If there are no red flags, I will, I will report that to the board president and then to the board, and we will put the report itself, store the report with the attorney. It's, it's very sensitive information about an individual that you hire, and so it should not be bannered around the hallways, but it'll be available if ever needed at the attorney's office on the lock and key. So I have, this process is a tried and true process. It is, we ensure that it's confidential, that the, that everyone is vetted through the same lens. I don't know anyone here, but I did know someone here twenty, thirty years ago. But the, everybody, internal candidates, external candidates, will be vetted through the same lens. There is a, we will, Joe's first cousin, twice removed, will not be treated differently than anyone else. So I'm very, very, very proud of the integrity, the transparency of the process, the reportability of the process, the frequency which we will process, the process will run, and the information that we will share with you, that will always be available on the webpage for your review. And feel free to, of course, call us in and ask any questions. If something you don't like, let's talk about it. There's no reason that we don't, we don't hide. I live about six miles up the road, so I can get here pretty quickly. There is a, so the important thing, if there's something that's askew, that is out of the protocol for which I've just slated, then let me know. Tell me about it. You know, things happen, it's not a perfect society. We can't predict, the snowstorms may change some of the dates, but we will not change the integrity of the information as we go through it. Madam Chair, I apologize for the lengthiness of the, of the response, but I wanted to make sure that everyone understood the overview of the process and the fact that it's a true and tried process, that it has transparency and truth. With that, I'll answer any questions that you may have. Yes, sir.
So I got a couple. So regarding the background deep dive, you said, can you please explain, at the will of the board, what that means? I know what it means, but I want it to be, the people need to hear what it means. It's not confidential.
Trustee Mitchell, what it simply meant was is that the board has approved the expenditure for that. It was reviewed with the board during our planning session, and we have incorporated that into the process, that at the end, the preferred candidate will undergo a deep background check.
Right, so my understanding from verbiage in the contract, there's several different packages involved for us to choose. So I thought that really that's what it really meant when you said at the will of the board, it's up to us to choose which one of those packages that, which would...
Will of the board at the front, at the front end that you approved in the, in the planning meeting. I think you're talking about the advertising package, and I want to...
Yeah.
I think you're talking about the advertising package and I want to, and I thank you for reminding me of that as a to-do for the board. We need to, we will have to decide on the final advertising package, which was optional. And we have already put it on the HYA webpage, which receives, based on the posting that you approved, and our webpage receives about 25,000 hits a month, so the word is out. Matter of fact, we have two, two applications in already. So the, so the, so I would expect that we will have a very bountiful response to the request for applications, but the, but that it will, the advertising piece, which runs the gamut anywhere from $600 to $6,000, we gave you a model of about 3,900, as I remember, which includes ED Week, it includes the AESA, the National Superintendent's Organization, it includes NAPSE, National Association of Black School Educators, ALAS group, Latino group, and the Northeast Regional Package. It's a very typical advertising package that the board will eventually should decide on. Has not been decided and we have not exercised those options yet.
No, I appreciate that. So the contract, your contract, you said that the timeline, the timeline is going to be posted public facing so that the people can see the timeline as we go along, correct?
That's correct.
Is that going to be on the district site, Dr. Smith?
This is a...
Okay. Will the contract also be public facing? Because it is public, it's not confidential. What we're paying them and the stipulations in the contract.
So basically, what we received so far has been posted on the website and whatever we get, we post.
And is the contract also on the district site?
I haven't seen that. I just seen recently mention of a survey, the company.
Will we put the contract on the district's site for the people to see?
Sure, if we receive it, we will.
Their contract?
You're requesting it to be posted, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
We said if we, okay, no, that's fine.
I haven't received it and I, you know, I don't have it, so when we get it, we'll post it.
When should we have that?
You have it.
We do?
Yes.
We haven't, right? I thought we had it already.
You'll have to finalize some things.
So we still have to finalize some things, but they started working already?
No.
Okay. All right, so, all right, that's another conversation, honestly. And the last piece is, everything that you share info-wise and decision-making, it will be with the entire board, correct? It will not just be with key members or few members or this subcommittee and that couple people?
Your cousin, my cousin, no. It will be with the entire, entire board. We have, we have, the board president is the key, key point of contact, but we copy everybody. That's why on the, on the planning document, you saw all of the board members listed with their, with their emails and so, and I think we even have a, the consolidated, what do you call it, the total, the one with total board members that go to all board members that we will use. So that, there is no intent to, to disenfranchise members of the board.
Make sure it's in the contract.
Can I just ask a question? I read the letter that President Saunders sent out to the community on your letterhead, on the HYA letterhead. Was that the way that that should have happened without the rest of the board members, but just President Saunders and basically on HYA letterhead? Or should it have gone out to the community on your letterhead with your name and maybe all the board members? Or is that something that you, you know, you gave permission to do?
Typically...
Or what? I'm just asking a question because, you know, sometimes this communication process is very poor.
The, typically the, that's a, it's a shot, but the, typically the, it does go out that way. We put it on the, we put the, on our letterhead because those are the processes that you use and how, and what's said in the community. President Saunders signed it as the authority for the community. So in terms of our ability to send information directly to the community is non-existent. So that's the link that ties it together.
Any other questions to the board?
Yeah. And as Karen just mentioned also, they recognize HYA as agent that's working on behalf of the board.
Okay, I got one more question.
And I just want you to speak to this so I can get clarity, because I did get the flyer that was circulating, which you heard mentioned from the public tonight about how, and I'm not worried about what happened in Maryland, because some things could be written, but maybe not all things, okay? So I don't live in Maryland, I live in Mount Vernon. I work here, I went to school here and I've been born and raised here, okay? So my concern is this house that I live in, this house that I work in. And so basically, I want to know that transparency is at 100% level, because we did read though, what we did in terms of what happened in Maryland. And then what you, what you started with nationally never worked with so-called wasted money, because you ended up right back where you started from with an interim superintendent. And if that's the, if that's something that would happen, then what are we wasting our time for and our money, right? I'm just saying. So because it's circulating, okay, and it has begun to circulate from Sunday that I could see, all right, and it's still circulating, I just would that you would bring clarity and term, and I heard what you just said already, but I just don't want to think that we are wasting our time, that's all.
And I, I don't know how to answer that question differently than I've answered it. It was just, it wouldn't be, it would not, it wouldn't be a lot of integrity if I started to change answers every time a question came up. But the, but let me just give you the facts. 93% of the people that we place make it through the first contract. About 80%, a little over 80% of the people that we place, the, are still in their jobs or have retired from their jobs. So the, so the sustainable, sustainability and credibility of the system is evident and can be, there's a proven track record of that. I would not, the, so there's 70%, 7% that does not make it. So there's the things that happen, so it's not, it's not absolutely perfect. Recruiting is not a science, it's an art, but we do it fairly well and we have a great, we have great numbers to show for that.
Okay. I just wanted to...
Thank you.
Any other questions, board members?
Just kidding.
Thank you, Ed. Have a good night. Get home, travel safe.
Thank you very much and we shall return.
Thank you. On the website. Yep, just very, very quickly, the website is up. We wanted to say thank you to the folks who helped us do that very quickly and the survey link is right there on the website too, so please go to it and let people know who aren't here tonight to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Good evening, Mount Vernon. I wanted, I wanted to talk briefly about the concern about immigration and our concern that several of our students are not attending school because they believe that ICE will show up and take them. And we've received several communication guidance from our attorneys and we've received the New York State guidance on safeguarding the rights of immigrant students. A letter that will be sent out and put on the website, Dear Mount Vernon City School District, "Over the past couple of weeks, there have been significant changes within the government, abolishing the Department of Homeland Security's policy, limiting where federal immigration enforcement acts can take place. Previously, spaces such as schools and churches have always been considered protective areas and students still remain protected in these areas. Every child, regardless of their immigration status, has the right to a public education under the landmark Priler and Doe Supreme Court case. The State Education Department, the Office of the Attorney General, and the Office of the Governor of New York distributed a document to school leaders throughout the state sharing guidance on how to safeguard students during this time. The district is devoted to following these guidelines in order to protect all students and staff to the extent possible by law. Under New York law, all children ages 5 to 21 who have not received a high school diploma are entitled to a free public education in the school district in which they live. The Mount Vernon City School District is dedicated to ensuring all students have equal access to an education, no matter their immigration status, race, or ethnicity. The district is committed to keeping our scholars and staff safe while continuing to foster an environment that is inclusive to all." So that ends the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Thank you.
So we're going to go on to committee reports. Budget and finance, no, I'm sorry. Trustee Ellie, I'm going to start with you.
I have nothing to report this week. Thank you, though.
Thank you. Audit Committee, trustee Kerwin?
So, as far as the Audit Committee, I don't have any report. Audit Committee has not met yet. We will, we have a resolution that, that's out where the Audit Committee could have met as a whole, a board as a whole. We will be discussing that resolution, perhaps to change it. We will be discussing it with the attorneys from Ingleman and Smith tonight.
All right, thank you. Finance, that's me.
The budget, yes. So the Budget and Finance Committee met on January 27th, where we went over the preliminary information regarding the 2526 budget. We also discussed the revenue estimates for 25 and 26 budget. In January, Governor Hochul released the foundation aid projections. Based on that projections, Mount Vernon City School District is set to receive a 2% increase in the foundation aid. This will equate to 1.6 million to our school district. So we're happy for that.
Take care.
Yes, currently, the Superintendent of Business, Jose, is working on the budget. He is taking in consideration the district reorganization. The first draft, as he promised, will be completed the first week of March. Also, at the budget, at the time the Budget Committee met, we reviewed the proposed budget including, potentially will be raising school taxes this year. That's also in discussion. We will have to discuss it with the board as well. In addition to the 2526 budget process, we also discussed the final analyst's report that was presented to the board by Capital Market Advisors and that status of the multi-year financial plan. The first draft is, of that plan should be completed by March 15th and it will be presented again to the board and shared with the public. We also discussed the grants. You know, the school district our size should have a lot of grants. Unfortunately, we, the school district was not successful or have not been successful in obtaining grants thus far. I think we only probably brought in about $44,000. Back in October, if you remember, the school district took out a TAN, that's a Tax Anticipation Note of 15 million, which is due to be repaid in full by June 15 of this year, 2025. The committee also discussed the taxes that's owed to the school district by the city. The business superintendent will be asking the comptroller to come to the board, one board meeting perhaps, and I'm hoping in March, to share a report from the city to the school district. And that's all I have for the Budget Committee.
I have a question.
Thank you.
I have a question, actually. So we're going to have some reports. Is, is the projected savings, since we closed those buildings, are we going to see, well, when will the public see the projected savings based on the closing of those buildings? When will that, that was one of the things that, one of the several things that stopped me from being able to vote in favor. When will the public be able to see those projected savings?
So since that vote just went out, the business superintendent, I could, I mean, he could speak or Dr. Smith could speak on that, they are working on that. That's part of the reports that should be coming out, but I, you know, turn it over to Jose to answer that.
After the Budget Committee reviews the first draft of the budget, we can go over and march the projected savings.
Okay, I appreciate that.
I'll aim for mid-March, but I don't want to, I don't want to put myself in that.
No, I get it, I get it, you got a lot, I get it. Question. And this actually kind of, so we've been, we've been, we've been constantly hearing about the downward enrollment impact of why we had to make the decisions that we've made and I think we've been looking at your projection showing us out through, I think, 2033?
Correct. That was based on the long-range plan through BOSs.
Right. So my question is, and this is a question that I've been hearing a lot, you know, outside, why are we, what are we doing to combat that downward spiral of enrollment? What are we doing to work to increase? Because the downward spiral didn't happen because the ceilings at Leadership Academy have fallen in. They're happening for different reasons. The proposal at State Legislature, comment was made and it was very strong, it said that Mount Vernon's academic record is not stellar. And I don't see any real reason why that is not playing a major factor. What, what plans do we have? And that's not really a question for you.
Sorry, sorry. Is that part of the Budget Committee?
It's all about dollars, yeah. This is all still about the dollars.
So the question should be to Dr. Smith.
You asked about enrollment. That's not part of the Budget Committee that I just presented.
You took one word, but I'm going to still, I'm going to continue my conversation. Dr. Smith, I will make a request. You don't have to answer right now, but I just want you to know that I, for one, am wondering what are we going to do and share with the public that is going to combat this downward enrollment projection that we've been seeing that drove the closing of these three buildings? Do you have, I just want to let you know that I'm interested and there's members of the public that are as well, because it looks like we're just like kind of accepting that downward enrollment and we're just going to walk off into the sunset and it shouldn't be the case.
I don't believe anyone is accepting a downward spiral, nor do we want students to leave the district. Basically, the comment that was made by the, during the legislative meeting talks specifically about where we stand. I met with him afterwards. Mr. Formosa and I met with Shelley Meyer, Senator. We met with also Pretlow, as well as we met with Senator Jamal Bailey. Basically, sometimes people need clarification because he spoke in terms of students, but if Jamal Bailey, Pretlow, and Meyer was here and they asked about what's happening in our curriculum, I would have Jamal speak about that because they would see the improvement that's going on. So a lot of what's said is really hearsay. While we have a long way to go, we still are improving academically. And I'm glad you brought the subject of academic up, even if it's budget, because we spend a lot of time on everything except for educating our students.
And a lot of money. It feels like a lot of money is being spent and that's what, that's really the part of it as well. That's why it's money, that's where the question comes from. What are we going to do curriculum-wise, academic-wise, to stop this continued downward spiral that's showing that's supposed to happen over the next eight to 10 years? That's what I'm saying, I'm sorry.
But we're not the only district that is losing enrollment.
It's all over the country. It's all over the country.
It's all over.
All over.
People are losing, school districts are losing enrollment. It's not just Mount Vernon, but it's all over.
No, I totally get that. No, I'm, I'm a ruining goal. So I'm just going to look about my ruining goal right now, and I understand definitely you're right 100%, but I'm a ruining goal today. So the other question I had was, we had the revenue, we saw the revenue, right? How it went down across X amount of years?
Warren, you're talking to Dr. Smith, right?
Uh, no. So I, we, you showed us, Mr. Formoso showed us that we saw the downward, the revenue in the negative over several years, right? Now, was that also based on, I would imagine, because this is before your time, so I'm not blaming you, this is your predecessor. That means that the budget was balanced each of those years on projected or expected monies we were supposed to collect, the levy or otherwise, city owed or otherwise, correct?
Yes, part of the revenue was based on projections, yes.
Right. So after the, I mean, this is my, this is a professional opinion I'm asking of you, your professional opinion. Once we saw we were having an issue after the first year collecting money that was owed by the city, what made us not take into consideration that factor being, what would you imagine? Do you think it was a sound idea to continue closing the budget, to balancing the budget on projected funds that we were supposed to be receiving from the city and the tax levy? Do you think it was a sound idea?
Not.
It's your opinion, I'm not holding you to it.
Trustee Mitch, you know I can't answer that.
Okay.
What I, what I will tell you is going forward, we have spoken about it, into the Budget Committee, we are giving very conservative numbers when it comes to revenue going forward.
That's good, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm Mount Vernon all the way. Born, raised, educated here, and have been four Mount Vernon students from the day I sat on this board. So I don't want to hear that they're only Mount Vernon. I'm Mount Vernon too.
Next is the Claims Committee. I do not have anything to report on the Claims Committee. The Education Committee, Dr., Education Committee, Sabina, you have anything to report on Education?
Dr. Doggett just told me February 10th is our next meeting, but I did want to also share that the Greenhouse Initiative is going forward at the Mount Vernon High School. We're preparing to add the curriculum for the district. Am I right, Dr. Doggett?
Yes, to be ready about Monday.
Because we have big plans for the district as far as after school. And there is a Saturday program, so we're inviting the three high schools' students to come out on Saturday morning or to sign up for it.
This Saturday morning?
It's Saturday at 8:00. It is presently already going on, so we're hoping to have more students involved because this project is really about the legacy for students.
Can board members come too?
Presently, yes. We'll be, we'll be, yeah. We wanted to have the board members come out when things were definitely full, yeah, fully activated. Right now, we're just starting it. There are students who are really showing up. There are particularly three of them that at 8:00 in the morning during the winter to show up and do something extracurricular is amazing, and we're hoping it's going to support the curriculum throughout the district.
All right, good. Good to hear. Good to hear. Next committee is Facilities, Trustee White, Facilities?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm out of context right now, but I'm going to go on with this little report. Since January 6th to the 27th, we have had extensive house, in-house repairs such as fixing broken toilets, sinks, piping, also repairing light sensors, running new power lines to, at certain schools. They have also painted classrooms, installed lighting in kitchens, repairing gym and locker rooms, addressing emergency rooms and safety concerns with stair railings and emergency lighting at some of the schools. We're in compliance, we're compliance-driven projects included, includes water-led testing across all the district buildings. I have to say, and I'll say it again, our staff is really working hard. They're saving us a bunch of money. They're saving us some money, and we appreciate them all together, our custodians, our head custodians, the custodians, the cleaners, and everyone that's involved, especially Mike and his committee. Thank you.
I want to give a shout out to the electricians and the plumbers.
Oh, that's right, the electricians and the plumbers, sorry.
Who are doing amazing work.
Amazing.
And volunteering and maintenance supervisor. Thank you, Mr. Ray Mountain.
You said, I know we, in the, in the report, you said we had lead testing in the water at one of the buildings. Can you just confirm? Oh, I'm sorry, all the buildings? How were we? Did everything come back negative? Were all set? Because I don't see the results. That's all I just wanted to, I'm just making an inquiry.
So we, we can go over the reports in the committee meeting, or I can go through the results? Because there were multiple tests on every drain that wasn't marked non-for-drinking, so it's, it's a very extensive report. Sometimes you have.
It's not that straight, simple cut.
No, no.
But none of the drinking water is?
No, anything that students are still drinking from or able to drink from is clean. And anything that came back after first draw that didn't meet the standards, we close it down, we cap it off, they come back, because sometimes lines need to be flushed, and they come back and re-inspect for first draw, and then they give the sale of approval.
I appreciate that. So in closing, and a couple of other things, I know we're close to getting that ice machine and refrigerator over Benjamin Turner. Do we have that timeline? Are we looking at that happening before the close of February?
Yes, we do. It's slated for delivery, let me see, February 7th.
Okay. And installation will happen same day?
Same day.
Hopefully? Okay, that's great. The window at Denzel Washington, where are we with that? The window was crashed through?
So the window is slated for delivery the end of next week and installation.
That's great to hear. Thank you. How soon will we be able to think through, will that be in-house installation? Will we be able to do it ourselves? Do we got to get someone?
It's part of the package with the company.
Okay, that's good to know. And I'm going to just make one sentence, one statement about, and this got to do with facilities. So in the gymnasium at the high school, with two things. First of all, the weight room, I was there. We lost Gus Williams recently. He's a basketball and Mount Vernon superstar. He's, he was an incredible person. His jersey hat has, has been displayed on the wall in the gymnasium, but the exhibit cases were, and some of them were in the shambles. I want to say that as of today, those cases have been refurbished and they look wonderful, and you can go and see Gus Williams' jersey in there now. It, it looks great in there, so I want to shout out our people. Mark Stuckey, thank you for your work. And in the weight room, I just brought up something about the floor being broken in there, so hopefully we can work on that. The last thing I want to say is, I tell you, you know what? I'm going to stop there. That's it, that's all I need.
So is that it for Facilities?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Ellie has something to say?
I had a question about, so if there's a worry about lead being in the water, does that mean that the water filters are going to be changed more often? Because like at school, they have, most of them have like a green, yellow, and red light. Sometimes they don't come on, or sometimes it'll be red for months and nothing happens. Or like where the water filter is supposed to be and like where the markers are supposed to be, that's broken. So I was wondering if that's going to be changed or fixed? That's it.
So the, any water that's labeled for drinking, or I should say not labeled for drinking, filter or not, doesn't have any traces of letter, any contaminants, so it's safe to drink. The filters, that's, that's a building issue. If the filters need to be changed, the building custodial department has the filters, they need to change them out. If they have issues, they contact us, we'll send out maintenance, because sometimes there's a special tool, or we need to move supplies, so they just have to communicate to us if they need assistance, and we'll get right on it.
Is that it?
Yes, it is.
Okay, Ellie?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you. Family and community engagement, that's Chris and I. Did you have a report, or should I just ask Dr. Doggett?
We have a question.
Okay, all right. HR is, Trustee White?
Yes, I, we have an, an HR meeting at, the next meeting has been changed from February 6th to February 13th, same time, 1:00.
Okay, thank you. So Chris, IDA, anything to report?
The IDA will meet again next week, so at our March meeting, I'll have a report.
All right, thank you. Nothing to report on insurance? Policy? The trustees had a retreat back in the fall, I think it was October, and we created some policies, and we created some policies that are now being reviewed by the in-house counsel, Royce Russell. So he has them, I'll follow up with him when he comes back, okay? Safety and security, Trustee Jenga?
We haven't met yet.
Special education?
Yeah, we didn't.
Okay. Trustee Marable, anything on technology?
Yes, thank you. Last time I reported that we had utilized one of our in-staff, in, one of our employees to help to coordinate the efforts of our BOSI's tech team. I'm sorry to report that it appears as though that is no longer happening. I'm not sure what, what transpired, so I'll, I'll wait until I get a report from someone will let me know what actually happened. As a result of the individual being removed from coordinating those efforts, we did not have any tech support for our state test coverage. This past, past week, productivity has gone down since that has occurred. I'm also concerned about the security issues that our technicians are, actually have access to our, access to our buildings through the use of keys. They also have access to our alarm systems. So I do have some security concerns regarding technology. In addition to that, it's my understanding that one of the technicians found themselves in an uncomfortable position, and along with that, that we've had some equipment that may also have been, has been, I don't know where it is. It's, it's no longer with us. We don't know where that equipment is. And so we have not met with technology, so when I meet with technology, and I know Mr. Ramirez, I'm sure he is on it, he will get back to me to find out what's actually going on and if we can address it. Because my bigger concern is that our consultants should not be directing the efforts of the district, that the district directs the efforts of our consultants. Our consultants are, are contracted by us in order to do the work that we authorize. And it is my belief and my fear that this consulting group, which is BOSI's, that they have, they have felt entitled, and that they have come in and they feel as though they can dictate to our staff what our efforts are and what our focus should be. So at this point, I will get back to you at the next report, but I'm hoping that these issues can be resolved when we get to the next meeting. That's all I have. Thank you.
Trustee Marable, I have a question. You're telling me that this was discussed in your committee meeting?
I'm telling you that during our, in our, we have not had a committee meeting. However, what I, I do check in to find out where we are, and I was informed that the efforts that we implemented on the committee are no longer happening.
Thank you. Thank you. Wellness Committee, Trustee Mitchell?
We didn't meet, but in real, wellness is also emotional and things like that. It's Black History Month again. I'm hoping that our schools, I want to, I'd love to see suggestions to the board, and I'll be honest, Mandela never ceases to step, stand to the occasion with their living exhibit, living museum exhibit. I learn a lot even when I go. Trustee Middleton and I went last year, it was an amazing experience as usual. So I'm hoping we'll see some really incredible Black History exhibits and presentations this year. Please don't hesitate, any school administrators, I'm sorry, school, yeah, school administrators, building, building principals that are hearing this now, please don't hesitate to send out and create some sort of invitation for board members to come and see the babies, show us what they know. Thank you.
So I am also on the Wellness Committee with Trustee Mitchell, myself, Trustee Kerwin, and Trustee Jenga. We had a meeting with Armaud, and we were, it was our understanding that we can just have a wellness meeting, but it's our understanding that we are out of compliance and we need to do, have parents and students involved on that committee. So, and based on the National Lunch Program, the USDA National Lunch Program, we have to engage parents and students, so I think we need to try to recruit some. So Trustee Saunders, how are you going to recruit the parents? Is it just an all-call? How, they show their interest, they write to the clerk, how are we going to? I think we need to engage the parent liaisons with that. Help us to recruit parents? Yeah, I think that would be the best thing to do, right? Thank you. Yeah.
It's the parent liaisons in the past to please engage with the parents and get maybe one or two.
Yeah, so we can probably recruit some people.
We can't have 50 people on that committee, so we definitely need to have, well, we want some folks from the, from the, from the community. And that's actually for all our committees, right? Can we have, we can have public members for all our committees.
I'm just, I'm talking about that one in particular. I don't think, I don't know about all of them.
We don't have legal here to tell us, actually. Actually, you got Gus here. Gus, I'm sorry, Gus. Can you ask that later on today? Can we have public, public committee members for our committees, for the district?
I think that would be part of our procedures and policies.
Oh, yeah.
Our committees, so when we get to that, yes, I don't think that has been sussed out yet with this board.
No, I was asking, is it legal? Is there any legal ramifications, Gus?
Why legal?
There are ramifications, and we should provide you with some executive session.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. So that does it for committee reports? Old Business? I have Old Business. You have something to say? I'm sorry.
There is, I'm sorry, there is a company that I helped facilitate to bring into the school district, ELOC Environment. They had sent out an invitation for students to register high school, ninth grade to 12th grade, to, for their cybersecurity computer course that is being held at SUNY Westchester, and that's on 17 South Fifth Avenue. They have a slot of 40 seats, and so far, only, I think, about 20, 22 students that applied. I just want to encourage any high school students that's listening to please contact your principal, because your principal received the information and the registration package for you to apply for the cybersecurity course. And it's on Saturdays, it's Saturdays 9:00 to 12:00 p.m. Thank you.
And when does it start?
It started, actually started already. It started in January, January 11th.
January to when?
January to May 17th.
And they can come anytime now? Can they?
Yeah, it's still, yeah. Registration is still going on, it's, it's still open. Because as I said, they have 40 slots. What they are going to do, since if Mount Vernon students are not, you know, available to go and not interested, they are going to the neighboring cities to invite those students to attend.
Okay.
But I encourage all students, we were first, first to approach, so I would like all students to attend. And again, it's ninth grade to 12th grade.
Have we sent out some sort of form or?
All the forms, the forms went out to the principals. I sent it to Dr. Smith, and it was disseminated to all the principals for the high school, high school students.
We'll add it to the website.
Add it to the, okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, Old Business? This is public comments from January 21st Board Meeting. How long, this is a question, how long are you willing to sacrifice our children and our city? The answer was, the decision to close schools and reconfigure schools is to improve the district's financial situation for the betterment of our students. Question two, why is it, why is it that no one from the board has visited the schools and walked through it, leadership? and walked through it, leadership? Leadership has received, leadership has received and has done multiple walkthroughs. Question, why are we closing schools that are vibrant and uplifting? Answer, there are many factors that impact the decision to close schools, mainly financial enrollment and infrastructure. Question, why are you closing my school when there are other schools that need more money to fix them? The answer is, the decision is not just financial. For example, it's the location and enrollment. Five, what is it, what is it that I and my classmates have to deal with the consequences of your mismanagement? The decision to close leadership was a recommendation of the building condition survey. Question, was it your ass, okay, I guess this is to me. Was it your assertion to disrupt that meeting at the NAACP? I think that what I do on my personal time is my business. Um, question, we, we each, will each one of you please tell me and the community why you did not answer the Honor Academy student from the January 7th meeting? She said she wasn't answered. The answer is Vice President Kelly spoke to the student and her family. That is it for public comment answers. Just another reminder, as you are aware, that the Mount Vernon City School District has initiated a search for a new superintendent, and has retained the services of Hazret Young and Athia and Associates, HYA, a consulting firm that specializes in assisting school boards with the consideration of candidates for superintendent. A key step in this process is to identify the characteristics as we will be seeking in our new superintendent. An open forum will be held Wednesday, that's tomorrow, February 5th, from 6:30 to 8:00 at Mount Vernon Honor Academy, formerly Home School, and we should greatly appreciate their assistance.
Okay.
Uh, this is about the Mount Vernon-Taco Ho joint team from last meeting. I understand completely the concerns that were brought to the attention of the board, but I have seen firsthand how beneficial it is by joining teams. We, I'm a swimmer on the swim team, and I manage the boys team, and the boys team went from probably less than 10 swimmers to over 15 in one year. The boys team won their first meet last year. They won multiple this year just because of these other boys from another school. And even then, these boys, even though these boys have done club teams, they've done swimming for many years, they have taught our boys and brought a competitiveness to the team that they want to be better. They want to swim against them. They want to swim in relays against them. So I perfectly understand the concerns about money, but I have perfectly seen firsthand how not only it makes students better athletes, but you also make connections with other kids outside of the district, and you're building a bigger community in Westchester. So that would be my only comment.
We're going to move on to our resolutions. Can I have a motion for 7.1, Human Resources, 128, certified?
Motion. Second.
Okay. I found this on the web, but can I have a motion?
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 7.2, Approval of Human Resources Resolution 120B, classified?
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
I have a question. Um, this would be directed to Mr. Campbell in reference to, I believe this is the right one, right? So by Donna Monroe, can you just kind of explain what the status is with him? Because I saw, um, probation, et cetera, going back to-
If someone is speaking, could they speak into the microphone? I can't hear them.
I'm sorry. Okay. Well, she's just going, asking right, so, okay.
No, I'm not going to ask him. What I'm going to say is, we cannot discuss individuals publicly in this forum.
Well, I'm not discussing him. I'm asking what was on the tab. And on the tab, it said that basically he was going back to probation from, I guess, where he was, because it just shows the amount, salary, et cetera. It's on the tab.
I'm sorry. We won't be discussing the individual.
I'm not discussing it. I'm just getting ready to ask a question.
Okay, your question.
So my question, because I don't have to discuss, I think I'm intelligent enough to know. So my question is this. Um, if somebody 26 years ago already went through probation, why would they have to do probation now with an addition, with the five-year probationary period when they've already done that? They leave a position, they go back to where they were, then they shouldn't have to do that.
Of course, he wants to answer.
It's, it's been corrected.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Doctor, Mr. Campbell. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 7.3, Request for a Leave of Absent?
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 8.1, Authorization for the Hiring of an Instructor for the Ford Automotive After-School Program, beginning February 10th, 2025 to June 9th, 2025.
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 8.2, Authorization to amend the Mount Vernon City School District Mentor Program for New Teachers, approved at the January 21st, 2025 board meeting?
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 9.1, Approval of Pupil Personnel Services Memorandum Number 14, dated February 4th, 2024?
Motion.
2020, yes. 2025. It's supposed to be 20. Okay. Um, can I have a set? Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 10.1, Authorization to Correct Resolution Worden for KGND Architects for the September, from the September 3rd, 2024 meeting?
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 11.1, Approval of Treasurer's Report for November 2024 and December 2024?
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
I had a question. We've never had a presentation by the treasurer. Is that confidential information that we need to discuss in executive session? If we wanted to discuss the treasurer's report?
It could be discussed in the public.
So that means that the treasurer can do a presentation in front of the board?
In front of the board, yes.
Okay, so I'm requesting the treasurer do presentation in front of the board.
Any more questions, comments? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 11.2, Approve the Internal Claims Auditor's Report for November 2024 and December 2024?
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 11.3, Approve General Funds Transfers, dated February 4th, 2025?
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 11.4, Authorization to Appropriate General Purpose Grant in Aid and to amend the 2024-2025 budget? Can I have a second?
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Just a quick question. Was this a result of your efforts when you went up to Albany? Is that where this came from?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
I was just wondering where this, where this came from, this general purpose 50,000 from the state. No, but I mean, where did it come from? That's what I'm wondering. Like, why did the state, did someone just say, hey, we're going to give you 50,000 bucks because we love you, or what, what was the purpose?
So, they didn't directly state why, like, if it were because of the, the, if it was because of what was being stated in the advocacy going on here with the state? Um, the state has discretion to give, uh, through the treasury?
Got it. Okay. Now, that's, I just-
So that's how we receive, that's how we receive it.
They're taking pity on us, and they know we're, we're, so they threw us 50 grand?
They did. They did. Yeah.
In, in short, next time, let's try and get, add a couple zeros to that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 12.1, To Enter Into Executive Session For the Purpose of Discussing Pending Litigation, The Financial History of a Particular Person or Corporation or Matters Leading to Their Appointment, Employment, Demotion, Discipline, Suspension, Dismissal, or Removal of a Particular Person or Corporation, and to Receive Legal Advice on a Pending Matter? Have a second, please?
Second. I have one question. Um, earlier, I did ask the question, there are several matters that are on the agenda for exec that there's no reason why they're not being discussed in front of the public. I don't, I didn't get an, an answer on that. Uh, there were topics that should be public facing. I'll pull the email back up. Hang on a second. Oh, is this one? Oh, thank you. Okay, so-
I also have a question. When you're finished, trustee Mitchell?
Say what now?
I also have a question. When you're finished.
Okay. So prior year school taxes, I don't see why that's something that we should be discussing in confidentiality. That's district, that's the public, that's school taxes. Um, I don't see why we're not discussing that in front of the public. Um, whatever, and the, uh, the school buildings being offline after closures should be something we talk about in front of the public. Um, I can understand we possibly preparing for the audit and IDA, uh, presentations, but for those, in Albany, February through 24th to 26th, I, I'll leave that out of it. But the things, the things that I just mentioned, prior year school taxes, uh, the, um, the IDA presentat, and I'm sorry, the building schools offline, school buildings offline, why are those not being discussed in front of the public? Why are they being made confidential? And, and of course, prior year school taxes.
I, can I answer the pri, the prior year school taxes should be in executive session? After we speak, you could then decide, the board can decide what they want to do with that.
What's, okay.
The reason I asked for exec, that's because I cannot state it openly.
Okay, got it. And the other items?
One of them is, um, you mean the committees for the last 10 years?
No, no, the school, the school building closures, after closures.
Can someone speak into the microphone? I cannot hear.
Wanted to know why you wanted to know what committees people were on for the last 10 years?
Not, not that one.
Yeah, you know, if you want to go public.
The school buildings after closure, remember?
No, that was the first one.
Let me read it again. The school closures.
School closures, so-
I want to know why we can't discuss it in front of the public. Why is it in confidentiality?
I wanted to talk to the trustees, because as you, as you heard, one of the, um, community members said, somebody said the buildings are for sale, and we need to all be on one accord as to what we're doing with the buildings. That's something that we need to discuss in, in private. Are we going to, are we going to close them for a year, two years? What, what are we going to do with them?
I mean, I don't understand why that's out of public conversation. It's their buildings, really. All right.
So is it the intention that we dis, is it the- The intention that we discuss it in private and then bring it to the public? Is, is that?
I think that's-
That what we always do?
That's what we always do.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Nobody's trying to hide anything.
So you, it would be presented to the public?
Oh, it's going to be presented to the public afterwards?
After you discuss it.
Yeah, oh, okay. That, that makes sense. I just don't, it just, yeah. Okay, that makes better sense. Thank you. I appreciate it.
So there's a motion on the floor?
I have a question.
Wait, wait, wait.
Trustee, trustee? I have a question.
Go ahead. We can hear you.
Hello? I have a question.
We, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, um, we have, uh, reconvened to public session. If all the items on the agenda have already been addressed, are we reconvening to public session?
Only if necessary. No, why not?
No, I don't think so. Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Abstain? Okay, we are in executive session.
Okay, and we won't be returning. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.